Okay, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Fairfax Planning Commission tonight, August 15th. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Newton?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Swift?
Here.
Pfeffer?
Here.
Petrone?
Here.
Bela?
Present.
Chair Jansen is absent.
Okay, I'll now read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Planning Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Planning Commission meetings. The Planning Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Planning Commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings. In order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view, members of the audience should limit their presentation to three minutes, provide comments by email as described in the meeting instructions on the agenda, to state your view and concern succinctly, and to submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or via email at planning@townoffairfax.org to be entered into the record. Do we have any changes to the agenda for tonight?
I just have a small comment. I don't have a Planning Commission Director's Report, per se, but I will have some updates. So, but here it says I will have no report, so.
And I don't see on here, public open time for public comments. Okay.
Yep, um, yes, I'm seeing the public open time prior to the consent counter on the agenda as posted to the website.
I'd make a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a vote.
Newton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Petrone?
Yes.
Bela?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. First up, we have time for public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission may do so by email, in person, or via Zoom in the manner described above on the agenda. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established. Seeing no one in the room, do we have anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands online.
Okay, I will close public comment on non-agenda items. The next item on our agenda is a consent calendar, but there's no items on tonight's consent calendar, so I think we can move ahead with public hearing item number one. Are we, yeah.
Hey, so the first item is 28 Baywood Court, and that's the property address. And the project that's proposed is the construction of a 120-square-foot wooden storage shed without any utilities. It would be, it would range in height from 10 to 12 feet. The siding would be plywood board and batten painted medium dark green, and the roof would have asphalt shingles. The south side would have a three-panel sliding door. The eastern side would have a fixed three-foot wide by four-foot-high window, and the western side would have a fixed six-foot wide by three-foot-tall window. The proposed shed would be located in the backyard of the property approximately 26 feet from the top of the San Anselmo Creek Bank at an elevation of approximately five feet above the top of the bank, and it would be within an AE flood zone that has a 1% annual chance of flooding. The project property is mostly level, but drops down at the rear by approximately 10 feet to a relatively flat area, then drops down another approximately five, five-and-a-half feet to another flat area that abuts the top of the San Anselmo Creek Bank. It is developed with a single-family house that has an attached single-car garage. There is also an approximately 88-square-foot detached shed with utilities located in the backyard. The property is located within the RD 5.5-7 residential zone and meets the FAR lot coverage building height requirements in all setbacks, except the existing house does not meet the 20-foot combined side yard setback. The proposed shed would meet all setbacks and the building height requirement, and would not cause the property to exceed the required FAR or lot coverage limitations. The town code requires accessory buildings to be 20 feet from the top of the San Anselmo Creek Bank or two times the average depth of the creek bank, whichever is greater. The average depth of the bank, creek bank behind the property is approximately five feet, so the 20-foot creek bank setback applies to the shed. And as mentioned previously, it would be about 26 feet from the top of the creek bank, so it would not encroach within the required creek setback. The proposed location of the shed is within the drip line of a heritage oak tree, but the property owner did have an arborist report prepared, and the arborist concluded that it's highly unlikely that the project would affect the tree in any measurable way due to the large retaining wall in the backyard that limits where some roots could be by where the shed is going, and the applicant also is proposing some low-impact construction techniques. So the project requires approval of a conditional use permit since it proposes a physical improvement on a property in the RD 5.5-7 zone that does not meet the minimum width requirement based on its slope. Findings can be made to support the CUP. The proposed use, siding, and design would conform to the general plan residential land use designation of the site, as well as applicable general plan policies and objective standards of the Fairfax zoning ordinance. It would not encroach with any required setbacks and would be elevated five feet above the creek bank. Its small size, relatively low height, and green paint color would minimize its visual mass and help it blend in with the creek corridor and the existing structures on the property. An accessory storage shed is a permitted use in the RD 5.5-7 zone, and many other properties throughout Fairfax have two storage sheds. So the approval of the conditional use permit would not constitute a grant of special privilege nor contravene the doctrines of equity or equal treatment. The proposed shed would not create a public nuisance or cause significant adverse physical environmental effects on abutting or adjoining properties or the surrounding neighborhood, since it would be approximately 57 feet from the single-family house at 30 Baywood Court and approximately 63 feet from the single-family house at 26 Baywood Court, and it would also be 26 feet from the top of the creek bank and five feet in elevation above the top of the bank. In addition to, the addition of the proposed storage shed to the backyard would provide the property owner with a protected place to store various items, enabling the owners to keep the property organized and secure, which is in the private and public interest. So staff did not receive any comments or conditions on the project from town departments or applicable outside agencies, and recommends the Planning Commission move to approve application number 2409 by adopting resolution number 2024-12 that sets forth the findings and the conditions of project approval.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff from the commission? Yep.
So this project requires a conditional use permit because it's on a non-conforming lot size? Could you just walk me through the permit process if it was, didn't require a CUP and was on a conforming lot size? What would that, that would be a ministerial process, presumably?
Yeah, it would just be a, I don't even think it would require a building permit. Yeah.
Sheds 120 square feet or less in size that don't have electrical or plumbing to them don't, don't require a building permit.
Yeah, I was hoping this was the sort of thing that wouldn't have to come in front of PC, you know, if we sort of update our guidelines or so we can avoid having to bring this sort of thing in front of the whole commission.
Thank you. I believe Commissioner Kelly has a comment.
There we go. I just had a couple of questions. It's a, I want to make sure I heard you right. It's above the 100-year flood plain, flood zone?
It, yeah, it's not in the flood plain. It is within an AE flood zone that has a less than 1% chance of annual flooding.
Okay, do we, and do we know, does that mean historically it hasn't flooded in this area?
Uh, we, we don't know, but we know that FEMA doesn't, you know, they don't try to prohibit construction there. They just require that structures have, that you have flood insurance for structures. And, and the building official indicated if this was living space, they, you know, FEMA might have more conditions, but it's not living space. It's a storage building.
Okay, and then related to that, you said it's outside of our, let's see, creek area, creek zone. Is it the, the top of the bank? Right?
Correct. So it, um, it's two, it's 20 feet from the top of the creek bank or two times the average depth, whichever is greater.
Yeah, and to me, those are the only two things at issue here. Other than that, I agree with John that this is definitely the type of item that we shouldn't burden the applicant or the town with. We should be able to do this by ministerial approval, and we should keep moving. Thank you very much, Aron.
Thank you. I see a hand from Commissioner Newton.
Thank you. Wasn't this the subject of some complaints or concerns expressed by neighbors? Could you go into that a little bit for us?
So the comments from the neighbors came in after our normal two o'clock deadline. So we were, I ran to Town Hall. I sent them to you guys, but the commissioners here have not seen them yet. So I believe the applicant's attorney will be coming up and explaining their position.
There is a letter of support in the application from one neighbor.
Oh, well, oh, there was a letter of support, too? I didn't get any.
No, sorry, that was the other agenda.
Okay, okay.
My bad.
Okay.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
So I've, I've, I've seen the message that you sent, and there are photographs and things like that expressed in this email. And so if we're relying on, did you say the applicant's attorney?
I'm sorry, the, the neighbor's attorney.
Okay, that's the little.
And those, those, those photographs came from the neighbors.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I may have misspoken.
You did, but now.
I'm not good at running back and forth to Town Hall.
We're all clear now. Thank you.
Okay, before we open for public comment, does the applicant have a presentation to make?
So Tamela, the applicant is Chris Harges. Is he online?
He isn't.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Hey, I apologize. I am traveling this week, so I'm hopefully on a good enough internet connection that you can hear me. So not much to say on our end. We have a one-car garage with car in it, a number of bikes and tools, and simply need additional storage space. I'd rather not leave bikes in the yard and would love to put them and tools in this space. Happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. I think we'll hold questions until after public comment, but if you want to stay online, we may have some questions for you after.
Sure.
Okay, we can open this agenda item to public comment.
That works. Hi, Commissioners. My name is Ford Green, and I'm glad this is subject to a conditional use permit, because otherwise I wouldn't have an opportunity to address you now. I represent the neighbors at 26 Baywood Court, Jessica Herbold and John Daigle. I've submitted a series of four groups of photographs. I don't know whether they've been distributed to you or not. What I'm here tonight to address are privacy concerns with respect to one window that's on the northwest wall that faces the bedroom window of my clients. And consistent with the policies of minimizing visual and sound intrusion and to provide reasonable privacy for neighbors of abutting properties, our request is that that single window be removed, because it does face directly into the bedroom of my clients. And if you look at Attachment C of your staff report, the top left-hand photo, you can see my client's bedrooms. And then the photographs, the eight-by-tens that I've provided to you, photos, and they're marked, photos one and two more clearly depict the relationship between the siding of the proposed shed and the next-door house and the bedroom. Photo three depicts the proposed shed construction site from the bedroom window of 26 Baywood. Photos four and five just show the existing shed, catty corner to which the proposed shed will be constructed, and nearby stairs for a point of reference. Photos six, seven, and eight depict the story poles that were erected by the owner. Photos nine and 10 show our measuring of what 12 feet is from the, from the ground. Photo number nine has a hash line across the top because the end of the tape is a little difficult to see. And then photo 11 shows another view that's not directly relevant, that goes from my client's bedroom to the house generally. And the purpose of that is to, to show the closeness of the two dwellings. So when you look then also at Attachment D, it shows the west side on the April 26, 24 plans and what faces Baywood Court. So really, what we want is no window facing my client's property because of privacy reasons. No objection otherwise to the construction of the shed. As staff noted, it falls within the FAR, the setbacks, height limitation, and everything else. We are a little concerned about what the ultimate use of the shed is going to be, and would like assurances from the applicant that there aren't going to be any utilities ultimately that find their way in there from the shed that's right next to it. It's not going to become an ADU, and there won't be any integration of, of the two sheds. And so I, I think that, given the privacy consideration, given the minimal impact of removing that one window, that my client's requests are reasonable, and that removal of that one window ought to be a condition upon which the permit is granted. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to field them. Otherwise, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask a question before you leave.
Yep, sure.
Can you tell me why you waited until this afternoon to send this? I mean, it seems like there's only a couple of us who are on Zoom who were able to get the email message. So your whole recitation of what all these photos are only resonates or only makes sense to the two of us that could look at the photos.
Sure, that's a fair question. And based on the meeting protocol instructions that's on the website, what's indicated is that any materials be submitted prior to the meeting on that particular page, although I understand maybe otherwise it's someplace, it's not there. So, one, I was not aware of, of any deadline. Two, my clients were traveling and did not receive the notice of this meeting until a couple of days ago, and didn't have time to get ahold of me, and I didn't have time to scramble and put this together the way that I have.
And me, and me, Ford Green, did bring copies enough for the people that are here. So they have the photographs. The commissioners have the photographs, and there's a set in the public packet.
Yep, just noting for Commissioner Newton, we have printed eight-by-ten of the numbered photos.
So I tried to cover my action the best I could.
Commissioner Kelly, you have a question?
Yeah, just one. Did you voice these concerns to the applicant?
Um, yes, I called the applicant's telephone number that's on one of the sets of plans this afternoon and left a detailed voicemail, basically conveying that what we were looking for was to remove that one window and, and said that I would like to see if we could work it out before this meeting, but I didn't hear back from them.
When did you leave that message?
Probably about 4:45.
Oh, just today?
Yes. And then, oh, also, I, that reminds me, in the staff report, there is no mention of the impact on the neighbor's privacy of this project. That's, that's completely omitted. And I also understand from my clients that, that the applicant did not contact them and seek their consent or feedback with respect to this project. And had he done so and pointed out that there was going to be a window in the direction or directly facing their bedroom window, they would have raised the issue then.
Commissioner Swift?
Remind me again which direction the window, which window you're speaking to?
From the best I can tell, it's northwest. So if you look at the staff report Exhibit C.
If you look here, there's a window east-facing and a west-facing side.
Right, and that's a little different than the photo. So I'm pretty sure it's the west-facing one that's got the window in the upper section of the wall.
Yep, Commissioner.
Well, so the, the applicant is still on Zoom. What's the protocol for having them respond to this?
I think we'll finish public comment in the room and then send questions to the applicant.
Send questions to the applicant? Can't they just like talk to one or another? It just seems so ridiculous, a colossal waste of time.
Yeah.
I agree.
At a public hearing, the discussion has to happen through the commission, and you guys have the authority to put conditions on any project. You know, if you, you know, you feel the concerns are valid, you can, it is, it isn't requiring, it is requiring a discretionary permit. And when you review a discretionary permit, you do have the authority to put conditions on the project. Yeah.
I understand that part, yes.
Uh, do we have any other public comment in the room or like to speak before we move on?
Thank you. Richard Pedamonte, 30, Baywood Court. So I'm the neighbor on the other side. Actually, all I want to say is that I just saw the complainant out in front of her house walking her dog. So she's nearby. I'm not sure why she didn't get the message, but just wanted to let you know that I saw her.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I missed both of my clients here.
Sorry. Please excuse my bad manners. Both my clients are present tonight.
Yep, and just to confirm, they were out of town, so that's why the notice was not received.
Well, it was mailed on August 2nd, and they received it. They were out of town and received it subsequently.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Do you mind just hitting the button? Thank you. Do we have any hands on Zoom?
Only I believe the applicant would like to respond, and I see no other hands.
Okay, if there are no other hands other than the applicant, I think we can move on to close public comment and send Commissioner questions to the applicant?
No, I think you don't close the public hearing until after applicant has completed their response.
Yep, okay. Who has the first question for the applicant, or if you want to just give a brief explanation and, you know, address what we've heard so far, and then we can follow up with questions?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. First, I'd like to mention that I'm unprepared to address any of these, having just heard the complaints, not able to see the photographs. So let me speak to them in general terms, and I'd be happy to respond in more detail once I've had time to review everything. So I'll address the window first. So if you look at the west-facing elevation, you can see the window in question. The bottom of that window is approximately nine feet high. So it's not as if anyone using the shed can look out that window and see towards the neighbor's home. Let me just quickly address the story poles. The story poles were at a different height, so they don't conform to the plan. They were an early test, so they're irrelevant in this matter. Any questions as to installing utilities, using this as an ADP, that's not what we're applying for. To me, it seems outside the scope of this application. And finally, I'll say that we attempted to work with our neighbors. I don't have the text chain, but it began, I believe, in March. I'd be happy to send that to the commission. We reached out to them, told them we intended to build the shed, wanted to get feedback. They told us they objected to it. I responded that I'd be happy to work with them. Could we make the shed smaller? And their response was, we will save our comments for the Planning Commission. So that was quite a number of months ago. We've gone through a number of plan revisions, and I just don't want to let it stand that we did not reach out to the applicant and attempt to have a friendly negotiated settlement here.
Thank you. Yep.
So this is a question to the applicant. So it sounds like the primary concern is the, the window. Just curious if you are open to modifying the location of that window that would be facing their bedroom?
I would prefer we look into it more closely. The window faces their bedroom, but as I said, the height of that window would make it impossible for anyone under nine feet tall to look out that window into their bedroom. There is no electricity in the shed. I'd like to get light in there, and so windows are important.
If I could just remind the commission, often in situations like this, you require the window to be opaque, so it lets light in, but nobody can see in or out. So that's also an alternative you could consider.
Thank you. Commissioner Newton, I think was up first.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the applicant if what you're asking for is a potential continuance to next month to give you time to look at the photographs and the questions raised by your neighbor, your neighbors, maybe talk to them or, or not. You know, if you asked us for a continuance to next month so you could figure that out, you know, that's something the commission could certainly consider. Thanks, over.
Can you hear me still?
Yes.
I, I'm actually not quite sure how to respond. My preference would be that we I, I'm actually not quite sure how to respond. Um, my preference would be that we decide this evening. Um, if you guys could let me know if you think any of these concerns are manifest enough that they need my addressing beyond what I've done tonight, that would be really helpful for me.
Well, if I could follow up, how do you feel about the opaque window idea that planning, uh, planner Neil raised?
Uh, yeah, we'd be happy to do a fog, foggy overlay or something. Though I was able to use recycled windows from another neighbor's uh, home remodeling project. So I don't have the ability to select. I do have the ability, my preference would be not to buy new windows, but if we could take this window and apply a hazy film to it or something, um, sure.
Thank you.
Maybe apply. I'm sorry, just one more thought. Apply and maintain. Thanks.
Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, um, the dimensions of that window and then how far away from the neighbor's bedroom is that side of the shed?
You want staff to respond or would you like me to respond?
Um, it, you can respond if you'd like.
Sure. So that you can see on the site diagram, that shed is sixty-two, sixty-three feet. Um, I may have an earlier plan here, sixty some odd feet from um, the, actually farther from the window of their home. The um, distance to their home is drawn from the corner closest to the shed. You can see from the pictures that their bedroom windows are farther to the west. Um, so some, something probably in excess of sixty-five feet. The window itself is, I I'd have to check, but I think based on the diagrams, it's about two feet by six feet. And goes from, you know, nine feet to begin, the bottom of it is about nine feet in height and then the top would be about eleven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly has a question?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Swift just asked my question. I just wanted to verify that dimension uh, from the shed to the neighbor's building. Uh, I know it's too early for our comments here, but I'd just like to point out that I'm looking out my dining room window and I'm looking into my neighbor's window at approximately thirty feet away and um, I think it's sixty-three feet. Sounds like a really long ways and plenty of room to add a tree if necessary. Anyway, I know it's too early for my comments, but I just wanted to verify that.
Yep.
Uh, for staff, is the erection of story poles for a CUP, is that a requirement? Or is that something the applicant did above and beyond what was required of him?
Yeah, it, it's not a requirement. He just did it to give him the neighbors an idea of what the shed would be like.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other comments from the commission, I think we can close the public hearing and move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Kelly?
There we go. Sorry to have jumped the gun. Um, you know, I think this, this is a, just a typical condition, right? We live in a town of, of small houses that are quite close together quite often. Uh, it sounds to me like the applicant did reach out, tried to uh, sort of give out the olive branch, if you would. Um, I hope this doesn't cause create tension in between the neighbors, but I am supportive of the project without any modifications whatsoever.
Commissioner Bell?
Uh, yeah, I agree with um, with um, Commissioner Brett Kelly's comments there. Um, it's just, yeah, it, it feels like, as I said at that, the outset, I hope in the future this type of um, concern doesn't come to us and we can handle this through sort of ministerial approval. Um, and, and not have to take the commission and the public's time for this. Um, I also, it just sort of, um, it just feels a little sad that for such an issue like this, that the neighbors couldn't talk amongst themselves and sort of resolve it. So I hope that, you know, in our small town, we, we work towards actually being able to negotiate things like this without having to come in front of a public body to negotiate things like this. But of course, that's not always the case. Um, so nonetheless, you know, the, the applicant has a right to, to build a shed. It's, it's a permitted use in the general plan. Um, uh, it's a storage shed. And so, yeah, I don't totally understand the concern about a window in a storage shed overlooking the bedroom other than a perceived uh, privacy issue. Um, uh, that being said, um, you know, the applicant has agreed that they would do the frosted or opaque window. And if that's, you know, a concession to smooth things out and allow us to go forward without further conflict, that seems like a good condition of approval. So that, that would be my sort of approach to this.
So I agree with Commissioner Kelly on this one. Um, I think the distance from the other house is sixty feet. Um, and one of the things that to me was key was that this window is going to be nine feet up. So as the applicant said, um, you're not going to be able to see out unless you're very tall. Um, and I, and that's not me, but I think that also this shed, because it's not going to have utilities, that it does have a need to have some light coming in. Um, so I can approve the project as it came before us as well, without any modifications.
Yep. Um, just before Commissioner Newton speaks up again, uh, you know, just want to flag uh, for the sake of motion, generally agree, but we'll save my further comments for after Commissioner Newton has a chance to speak again.
Thanks. Um, on the question of the ministerial approvals, I definitely hear what uh, Mr. Green was saying about giving uh, neighbors an opportunity to voice concerns even when it's something uh, that seems relatively minor. Um, and I wonder if we look ahead to changing our planning commission rules to somehow allow for more ministerial actions if we can build, continue to build in the notice to the neighbors uh, to give them an opportunity to be heard. I don't know how we do that. Um, in this case, I think there's uh, everybody said, you know, very smart things, you know, like, oh, we need light, but isn't there windows in three out of four of the walls here? Uh, so I don't know if this particular window is going to make the difference. Uh, and as Commissioner Bella said, the um, applicant is willing to put the frosting or opaque uh, layer or whatever on the window. And I, you know, do think that that's a relatively minor adjustment. You're likely to continue to get enough light through the other windows and uh, and it's a storage unit. So, you know, you don't necessarily need to have a clear window for, for the boxes and other things that are being stored there to, to look out at. Um, and the nine feet, you know, again, I agree. So I would uh, I would be willing to make a motion to approve the application with the condition with respect to frosting or adding an opaque coating on the, on the window, on the west facing window, I believe. Over.
Thank you. I think um, for asking for a motion, just want to note, you know, I generally agree with uh, Commissioners Kelly and Swift. And I also understand, I think when we first talked about going to the ministerial approvals, I was more vocal on making sure that neighbors had an opportunity to voice their concerns when not otherwise in the process. So, you know, understanding here, I think that's more of a decision point for here, the only reason it came to us is because the project site is fifty-nine feet wide instead of uh, sixty-eight feet wide. If that's the appropriate distance, you know, how many, how many things can we get off of the planning commission's plate by adjusting that, you know, that's a, I guess, a policy decision for another time. Here, you know, I, from prior meetings where we've dealt with specifically window issues between neighbors, um, it's either been living space to living space where we've added conditions or in circumstances where it's like a deck, so you know, a place that uh, people couldn't otherwise use. I, you know, I, I appreciate the desire for privacy. My, you know, one thing I was also thinking about here is that the, the applicant already can go and use the space without any walls or you know, the windows opaque or not, uh, rooftops already has access to the space and can use it. You know, I think it would be nice if the applicant is, wants to work with their neighbors to, you know, put some, some sort of uh, treatment on the windows to address some of their concerns. But I think like has been said before, uh, that's something I think we should encourage people to uh, manage interpersonally. Um, uh, that being said, I'm happy to entertain a motion, either Commissioner Swift or Commissioner Newen, if one of you wants to go.
I'll make a motion. Let me get there. To approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number twenty-four dash oh nine for a conditional use permit for the construction of an approximately hundred and twenty square foot shed at twenty-eight Baywood Court.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Newton?
Abstain.
Kelly?
Aye.
Swift?
Yes.
Patronay?
Aye.
Bela?
Aye.
Acting Sheriff Pfeffer?
Aye.
Uh, so I think that is a vote of five and one abstain. I don't have in here, but I believe that the applicant and the public has a ten day window to appeal the decision of the planning commission this evening. Uh, information on the uh, appeal filing and associated filing fees can be obtained from the town. And I think we are then otherwise uh, ready to move on to item number two.
And Chair, um, I'm going to recuse myself for item number two due to proximity to the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Swift.
Everybody ready? Okay. So this project encompasses the replacement and extension of a pre-existing combination eight foot tall wood post, wood post picket and lattice fence and a six foot tall wood post and picket fence along the southern side property line at forty-nine Madrone Road. The proposed fence will reach a maximum of eight feet in height and run along approximately a hundred and thirty-six feet of the south side property line from the rear property line towards the front property line. At that point, the fence jogs north towards the center of the property for approximately ten feet while maintaining a ten foot setback from the front property line. The project site and the property next door are both steep, irregularly shaped. And the middle of the forty-nine Madrone Road site is very narrow. It's approximately only thirty-seven feet in width. Uh, based on ordinances adopted by the town, uh, we did some research and, and we think it's pretty likely. We know that the one house at forty-nine predated the towns and corporation. It's possible the other house also predated it. Um, so there were no regulate, there were no regulations, there were no building codes in effect. Thus, we have two houses that are very close together and um, the applicants provided the neighbors with the plans for replacing and extending the eight foot tall fence along their shared side property line. They erected story poles to exhibit what impact the increase in height will have on both properties. And they have provided the site photographs and attachment D to your staff report showing the proximity of their yard to the house at forty-five Madrone Road. The owners of forty-five Madrone Road support the project and they, their letter of support is attachment E to your staff report. Project requires a fence height variance to be approved by the planning commission because the height ordinance for fences limits heights on side and rear property lines, limits fences on side and rear property lines to six feet in height. Staff's recommending that you approve the requested height variance based on the following uh, suggested findings due to the irregular shape and slope of the properties at forty-five and forty-nine Madrone Road, as well as the approximately thirty-seven foot width of the center of forty-nine Madrone Road. And the location of the outdoor living space, the strict application of the six foot height maximum will deprive the residents of forty-nine Madrone Road of the privilege of, of having a reasonable amount of private outdoor living space, a privilege enjoyed by, enjoyed by other property owners on Madrone Road. Two, the fence site, fence site variances have been granted in the past for properties with unique site characteristics similar to those found at forty-nine Madrone Road to protect privacy, block headlight glare, minimize site intrusion by animals, et cetera. Therefore, granting of this fence height, fence height variance will not be a grant of special privilege. Three, the strict application of the six foot fence height limit for this site that has benefited from the existing eight foot fence for many years and where its replacement and expansion will only maintain that existing privacy would be an unreasonable hardship for the owners. And four, the eight foot tall fence maintains a ten foot setback from the front property line away from the public right of way, where, where it will not obstruct vehicular visibility. And the adjacent property owners impacted by the fence have indicated their support for the project. Therefore, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public or injurious to other property in the vicinity of the project site. We only received comments from the building department on this project. And fences that exceed six feet in height do require a building permit, so they'll need to get a building permit before they start construction. We're recommending that you approve application twenty-four dash ten by adopting resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, setting forth the findings and the conditions of the project approval. That would conclude my report.
Thank you. Um, do we have any uh, questions for staff? I see Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. Linda, do, do we require the fire department or police department to um, sign off on a height uh, fence height variance?
They, they, they review it and they didn't comment.
Okay.
Yeah. I know, I was a little, I was kind of surprised by that because my, the fire department where I live there, just they, they're, they get apoplectic about wood fences. They don't want them anywhere, but there were no comments from Ross Valley Fire.
Uh, and just so I'm clear, this is an existing fence and we're replacing it at the existing height and then expanding it as well?
Correct.
Okay, so the existing height will stay as is currently?
Yeah, and it's, it's getting dilapidated and rundown, so they want to replace it.
Okay, thank you.
Unless anyone else has, I think we can hear from the applicants if you'd like to present.
Okay, just real quickly, Linda, is this one that you would like to see the kind of thing that you would like to see be ministerially administered?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. You can come up now. Yep, just be sure to hit the button.
Good evening, staff. Good evening, commissioners. My name is John Romatis. I live at forty-nine Madrone Road. I'm here with my wife, Jane. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, we have an existing fence uh, along the whole south side of the property line. And as Linda mentioned, uh, it's very narrow for whatever reason. Um, you know, the houses were built close together. Uh, I think we've heard stories that maybe the house was just brought in the middle of the night and foundation, who knows, a long time ago. Um, but uh, we get along with our neighbors and it, as it turns out, our property line, uh, there's a, a point that lands right on their um, on their landing at the bottom of their stairs. But there is a um, an easement, so we're, we're respecting the easement and we're actually providing them with a little more space. But uh, the fence is, uh, somebody asked if it is existing at eight feet. It is except for sixty feet of it existing at six feet height. And so that is towards the front of the property, excuse me, towards the front of the building. And that will be replaced with an eight foot fence. Um, and we, you know, we're gonna make it, it's gonna look good. It's gonna be a good looking fence. Um, and, you know, uh, if you can see in the packet, I don't know that you can really see that we have a, a, a straight view right into our neighbors' windows. And, uh, given that we're on a slope, you know, even an eight foot fence will still be able to see their house, but it'll, kind of, we're cutting it right at their roof line. And, uh, yeah, I don't know. So I think that's about it.
Yeah. Any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
No, it's not seem, thank you, controversial. Uh, any other public comment? Yep. Please.
I'll just add, it's, um, it won't affect anybody except the neighbors, uh, who like the idea. Um, it can't really be seen from the road. What can be seen from the road will be an improvement. The fence that was there, it was so old and rotten, it basically fell down when they were moving some ivy from it. So I think it's a win-win all the way around the roads or for us anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, you mind? And are there any raised hands on Zoom?
I see no hands online.
Thank you. I think we can close public comment and go to commission comments, questions. Yes, Commissioner Bella.
Well, just want to note that this, this, this is where I saw the letter of support. So you've spoken to your neighbors. That's great. They're, they're, they're all for it. It sounds like it's, you know, merits the, the, the fence height variance. So I say, yeah, let's just go for it.
Yep.
Uh, I also just want to commend the applicant for coming, um, here tonight and for going through the process. Um, I think there have probably been some fences in Fairfax that have been built without a permit that are not conforming. Um, so thank you very much for doing that and for reaching out to your neighbors and for erecting story poles as well. That's above and beyond what, what we require. So just expressing my gratitude.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Newton? Uh, we're not hearing you. I think you may still be on mute.
Sorry, I'm ready to make a motion unless somebody else has a comment.
I would be happy to hear the motion.
Okay, I move to approve, uh, Resolution number 2024-13 of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 2410 for a fence height variance to allow construction of an eight foot tall fence along the south side property line of 49 Madrone Road.
Second.
You have a motion in a second?
Okay, Newton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Petrone?
Aye.
Bela?
Aye.
Acting Sheriff Pfeffer?
Aye. It's a, uh, motion is approved. Uh, the public and has a 10 day window to, uh, appeal this decision. Information on the appeals process and the, uh, associated filing fees can be attained from the town. I think that closes this hearing item. Thank you.
Thank you. We are welcoming back Commissioner Swift for our next item. We have no discussion items on the agenda. We have the minutes from the July 18th meeting, uh, for approval. Were there any comments from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Swift?
So I wanted to, um, make a change to the minutes, page two, first paragraph under number two. Um, from Principal Planner Neil presented the staff report, staff answered questions from the commission regarding the tree committee's involvement, relocation of the apple tree and replacement of the Japanese maple. Two, Principal Planner Neil presented the staff report, staff answered questions from the commission regarding the process for the tree committee's recommendation to the planning commission and the timing of this particular application, relocation of the apple tree and replacement of the Japanese maple. And the reason I'm requesting that is to bring some clarification to, um, the particular situation with that application, um, and also to clarify the tree committee's role in recommending, um, to a planning commission application and why this was not within that normal process.
Noted. I, I appreciate that comment. I think it does, uh, provide helpful, uh, clarification.
Question?
Yes, Commissioner Newen.
Commissioner Swift, so your clarification just adds the reference rather than providing the explanation. And I, I guess really if you just provide the reference, you're keying people in that they should go listen to the YouTube video if they want to get the full explanation, because we're not going to put that, you know, detail into these minutes, right?
Right, or they can read the staff report because it was explained in the staff report why, why it didn't get a tree committee recommendation and how the timing glitch occurred.
And so that goes back to kind of my sense of clarity in the minutes that we're not really explaining in the minutes, um, the issue of going to the, not going to the tree committee. So we're addressed, we're identifying it, but we're not giving any clarity to it. And I think this helps with that clarity. People can also, you know, read the staff report and watch the video, but I think this provides information as to what the process is and to some degree that we were addressing this outside of that normal process. And I think it's helpful in the minutes to explain that.
Can you read that to me again?
Yes, ma'am. Um, changing it to Principal Planner Neil presented the staff report. Staff, staff answered questions from the commission regarding, and this is, um, an addition, regarding the process for the tree committee's recommendation to the planning commission and the timing of this particular application.
Okay, thank.
Rest is the same.
I appreciate your detail and attention to these nuances. Thanks.
Uh, likewise, just, you know, one, one other note on that, just thinking, uh, for how I use the minutes when looking back for information and not to watch the whole video. The word timing is not otherwise in this, uh, set of minutes and it is something if I had a folder filled with meeting minutes, I would, you know, control left or search for timing. If I was trying to find these ones or see if there was ever any question about timing of items. So I think it's, I think it's helpful. And there's no other comments. I'm happy to hear a motion to approve the minutes with Commissioner Swift's, uh, suggested addition under item two.
Motion to approve the minutes with Commissioner Swift's, um, adjustments to item number two, was it?
Uh, page two, first paragraph under number two.
All right, we have a second?
I'll second.
Newton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Petrone?
Aye.
Bela?
Aye.
Acting Sheriff Pfeffer?
Aye, thank you. Minutes are approved and we understand there is a planning director's report this evening.
Just a short preview of coming attractions. Um, so Karen and I have been working with this company called Deckard to kind of monitor short-term rentals. And we've identified some potential, we, we might be trying to, uh, do update to the code to address some kind of inconsistencies that have been preventing people from registering. So anyway, that's one item uh, that may be coming to you in the next couple of months. The other items is we are still, I was hoping to go to the, the town council as I mentioned, the last meeting to discuss dark sky because there's a lot of dark sky regulations that don't end up in the municipal code that kind of are with either streetlights or education programs and blah, blah, all this other things that I wanted to kind of get their input on. Anyway, they kicked me back here and said they want to hear from you all first. So anyway, so I'll be coming to you, um, next month with, um, uh, some suggested code language and some additional policy, um, language to consider. And that you won't have to feel obligated to do it all in one meeting if you don't want to, but I'll, I'll try to give you as much as I can. And then the third item is we also have been working with our general plan consultant, uh, who is also our housing element consultant. There, there, as I mentioned previously, there's some follow-up to the safety element that we're required to do by state law, and we're also updating the, uh, land use elements. And so we'll have a study session on that, um, probably October. Anyway, those are things to look forward to, so.
I had some questions, um, on the dark sky. There was, I had saw, um, some correspondence and, uh, on that. And I thought it would be helpful to maybe address if individuals have problems with light trespass off of the streetlights, how they can address that. I know I've had, um, a couple individuals that were able to provide the pole number to the Public Works Director and mention the light trespass. Um, and they were able to get some shielding on those. I don't know, you know, what, um, what we have as far as number of shields or, or anything like that, but I think there was some successful contact with getting some shielding. So that's one avenue. I think for residents that may have, um, concerns about light trespassing into their homes. Um, the other thing was, um, P Gini is replacing a lot of poles in town. Um, and the question comes up as to when they're replacing poles, how, if there's a light on there, how is that addressed as far as, you know, they're putting in a new pole? They're putting the light fixture on. Does it go in the same place? Can it be looked at for, um, different light trespass? Issues?
Yep.
Um, and, and maybe you can get some of those questions answered?
I, yeah, I can, I can try to get those answered. I've been, I've been working with the Public Works Director Lauren, um, Ubertus. I don't think I'm saying his name right. Um, and, uh, I can, I can even ask him if he wants to come to the meeting next month if possible, if he's available. If not, I can, I can work with him ahead of time.
Okay, and then the other piece of this is, um, some dialogue that I saw where it seemed that we were having to go to the county and coordinate with the county to address some of these things. And I just wanted to make sure that what we're doing is looking at local Fairfax jurisdiction light ordinance.
As far as, as far as what I'm doing, I'm just working on the, the Fairfax regulations and policy. I, I, I mean, we know that there's a effort in the county, but
Right.
We try to be friendly with the other jurisdictions, but we don't have to always do what they do, so.
All right, thank you.
And, uh, yep, Commissioner Bella?
Yeah, just a, a question on, um, uh, process and timeline for coming up with some, uh, modifications to what is required to get brought before council. So for instance, you know, fences and sheds that may require a CUP. So we talked about that. We talked a little bit about this last time. Just curious if that's in your docket and what the sort of process would be and a timeline for when you might get back to us with some recommendations or some, something we could take action on to make, um, make the process here easier for the public and for the commissioner members regarding uh, those types of things which do, would make sense to be, um, uh, approved ministerially versus coming in front of the PC.
Yeah, that's, uh, easy answer. There is, it's, it's on, it's on the docket. We're thinking about it. We're, we've been reviewing the, the code. The, um, I think the big question is, I mean, we have a, a, a long laundry list of things that we could change, so we, we may want to break it into low hanging fruit first, and that would be certainly low hanging fruit in, in my mind, so.
And I think, um, when, when we've talked about those things, there's, you know, one, you know, looking at what comes before us or what doesn't need to come before us and what that process is. The other thing are the corrections that need to be made to the existing code. Which everybody's keeping list of where they've found errors in the code. And, and I guess from my perspective, when we address those, I think, um, looking at most recent code changes and working back may be good since we've gone through a lot of code changes in the last year. So they're fresh and, and new, and then working back to the ones we know that have needed correction for a long time.
And I will say that the, the version that's on the internet right now is, is up to date. So they've made all the changes.
Right, um, okay, related question on the, um, updates required, uh, related to the housing element. Are there any, um, deadlines? Do we know what the next deadlines there may be for getting changes approved?
There is no set deadline. I, I think they, they, they want you to do it in a reasonable timeframe, but there's no set deadline.
And do we have, has there been any correspondence from HCD since the approval or are they just approve it and we're off on our own?
No, we haven't, we haven't heard from them. I think, well, well, once we get the housing element adopted, um, it's the, the, it moves to kind of the annual report every April, April 1st, Stu. And so it just gets, they, that, that's how they monitor it, so.
And then appreciate actually getting the preview that dark sky is uh, likely going to be on the next month's agenda. I think having that even just a one meeting advance notice on a policy thing like this is helpful, um, specifically because my question is, how far in advance of the meeting do you need us to send you things that we may want you to consider? Um, for inclusion in the staff report, you know, if there is some sort of, uh, policy white paper or, you know, there's some organization that has model language that we want presented for discussion by the full group. Um, in consideration, how, how far in advance do you need to get stuff like that before so that it can be included in the report?
As, as soon as possible. So, and, and I, and I want to say it's something like dark sky and, and it's, you know, it's a, it's a big issue with lots of different ways to go. So it's not something that you have to feel pressured to, um, do all in one meeting. I mean, we'll, we'll give you an option to make a recommendation in one meeting if you want, but you can always, uh, take a couple of meetings if you need to.
No, I was, I was thinking about this in the context of you were otherwise ready to talk to the town council about it and they wanted to hear from us first. So if there's anything we specifically want to have on the agenda for discussion by everybody, potentially so that the town council sees it, you know?
Yeah.
Well, and I'm, I'm hoping that, um, we approach this, and, and as everyone said, dark sky is a large project. You can go many different ways on it. Um, and in the past, when we've addressed things like this, we've actually drafted policy here based on meetings and meetings with the community at the table to do that. And then our draft has gone to the council. So I'm hoping, um, we go back to that process where we do that and give them, you know, uh, a draft based on our work internally and with the community.
All right.
Yep. I think that is a good idea for, for something where if we can ask town council- I think that is a good idea for, for something where if we can ask town council to schedule a public workshop for the planning commission, I don't know if they're the ones who have to book time for us so that we can have a public meeting, get input and then put something together.
No, I think the, I think we have permission to have a public meeting if, if, if you want to do that.
Okay, we don't have to, they don't have to for staff or anything like that else. Okay.
No, for a while what we did is we had two, two meetings a month and the second meeting would be for like, you know, discussion, community input on, that was last time we updated the housing element, right? Those, the public hearings, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, so that can be our discussion at the next meeting. I mean, if you wanted to have a special meeting, we could have a special meeting. If you just wanted to have one meeting that just focuses on just this one topic.
And then I just, unless you have more on the dark side, one other.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I think we even, I think that like David Woultering even had a meeting on a weekend, right? He had some meeting, so you, you don't have to nest, with some meeting on a Saturday. You can make it more accessible to the public if you want to. It doesn't have to be, you know.
Yeah. I appreciate that. My last.
Right, Jeff? That's correct, right? I mean, that's.
Anytime, especially it's going to be any, anytime, yeah.
Um, and then my last question on the report was just, I know for other rental registry issues and short term rentals, I know the county also has their own ordinance and registry. Is there any coordination between Marin jurisdictions and the county on sharing a system for a short term rental registry or is that something everybody's just doing?
Yeah, we kind of have to do it. We have different rules. The rules are quite a bit different. I mean, some jurisdictions ban them entirely. Some are very, you know, allow them everywhere, so it's all over the map, so.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Any other planning director's report questions? Otherwise we can move on to commissioner comments requests.
I just have one comment if anybody is, is watching. It's kind of off topic, but I think it's important that Saturday is the annual sidewalk CPR training from 10 to 2. It's going to be at the firehouse. This is done countywide and we have one location here in Ross Valley and it's the firehouse and it's training on hands only CPR, using an AED, use of Narcan and stop the bleed. And I will, I've taken a longer course covering these four items, but I think it's very important and it can help individuals at home, plus, you know, the Narcan if you run across somebody. So I think if people have the time, they can stop by the fire station and get some training. Thank you.
Second that suggestion, I know I used to be an ice rink skate guard when I was younger and in college, but just getting comfortable that you should not be afraid if you know the basics to use an AED, that can make a very big difference in timing and they are more accessible. A lot of places have them where people have them in car, first aid kits. And I know that's, that's something we were always told, people are afraid to use a technology that they don't know and just becoming familiar with it can save lives, so. I had one question actually relating to a public hearing item, sort of general. Do we, after the public hearings, do we, when we do research for some of these sites that we have that, oh, there's, these two properties were constructed before the town was incorporated, things like that. And we're doing research for a specific topic to try and get background. Is that information stored anywhere other than just as part of the staff report for this specific agenda item? Is it just, you know, do we have like a parcel record so that you're not, say 45 Madrone comes back in three years and some, you know, you don't want to have to do the same research over again?
So it, it's kind of all over the map, but like you can go to the Marin County Tax Assessor's off, like website and put in the parcel numbers and they usually have a construction year, right? The one house next door was a little bit tricky because, you know, it, there was no clear date of when it was actually built and it was sometime in March and March, beginning of March is when the town incorporated started adopting ordinances. So I wasn't really sure. I couldn't say definitively it predated the code, but I'm pretty sure it probably did. So you can get the year from the Marin County Tax Assessor, right? Sometimes, you know, whether it was done with permits is not that clear, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if there's a, just a, other things that you may have, you know, copied and pasted into a bigger file before you get to the staff report that comes to us of, oh, this fence definitely has been here for years. Now they're replacing it, but has it always been a property? Not that we need to create more records than we have to, but if the, if somebody's already found the information, I'd like, you know, the idea of saving it more accessibly so they.
The staff reports like, so in the olden days, they were one page, even for new houses. There was no information in them, right? And so, no, it's not, there's no, you know, a lot of the building, building permit files don't have any construction dates. You have to go to the tax assessor to find out when they were built because the predated the towns incorporation, right?
Yeah.
So the property files were created when the town was created and there's not really anything before that. I just found this one interesting because the parcel lines were so weird, you know what I mean? And, and, and then I thought it was interesting how some of the houses were really old and then others were in the 60s, you know?
I, you know.
We have gotten a little too in-depth.
Well, I think it's interesting and also it seems like something that could make the planning staff's lives easier. You know, I know we've had planning students come and do sort of a course credit thing like a, a sort of, at least in law firms, oftentimes when you have people come in for the summer who can't actually work on any matters, you have them do research and surveys on what's this, how's this treated in all the 50 states? Seems to me like if there was somebody, you know, an opportunity, someone wanted to spend some time in planning department, looking at the old records and saying, here is one place where you can see every time we had notes in this neighborhood. Not, not, not something anybody would ever use their staff time on, but for, you know, a student just sitting around.
We'll keep it in mind, but I mean, there's minutes and then there's property files and there's just like, there's old tax records because in the beginning when town, the town incorporated, they did their own tax collection, right? It's, it's all over the map. Then it went to the county, now we don't.
It's a uniqueness of the town we live in, but I appreciate seeing that in the staff report and, and learning more about those uniqueness.
Yeah, it's helpful to have all the background. Commissioner Newton?
Thanks. I want to see a topographical map of the town, like, you know, so I can get a more 3D spatial appreciation. If, you know, there's any, any topographical map interns out there looking for something to do. But the other thing, Cindy, your little announcement reminded me that I wanted to make sure all the planning commissioners and anybody watching know that the Fairfax Open Space Committee is celebrating their 20th anniversary on September 7th. And there'll be a, a live celebration from like five to 10 or so, maybe, you know, and after, I don't know, on September 7th. So put it on your calendars, keep an eye out on the town website for the details. Thanks.
Yeah. Unless anybody has anything else, we can adjourn before 8:30.
I'll make a motion to adjourn before 8:30.
Second.
I think you can all just say bye.
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 Thank you.